Please stand, pludgial agents.
Pludgial agents to the flag of the United States of America to the Republic with which this ban is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to take first item out of order. I think Mr. Brenner. This is on 125 South Green Bush Road site plan and 155 South Green Bush Road. It's PB 19-17 and PB 19-18. Mr. Brenner. I think it's on.
It is?
I believe so.
All right. This letter was sent to the town at 4:45 this afternoon. It says basically that based on the following facts. One, the receipt of the letter from the Rockland County Planning Board on the day of the hearing was scheduled to be received at 3:00. Two, the county planning board letter indicated that the property under review might be under regulations of the overlay zone. Three, the Orange County Planning Board will not have-
All members present and an override might be required. Therefore, my client is requesting that the hearing be delayed.
Okay. So, anyone who's here for either 125 Green, South Green Bush Road and/or 155 South Green Bush Road, the items will not be heard tonight. They're going to be rescheduled to a later date. Right now, we don't have, we don't have a date. The only thing I can say is just keep posted in respect to information through the town. I think there are some other social media groups that also have brought items up about this and keep everybody posted. Okay? So, anybody that's here for those two items will not be heard. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, Mr. Brenner-
Hold on, just a second.
Quiet, please.
Hold on, just a second.
Mr. Brenner? Mr. Brenner?
Yes?
Can you please come back up? I just have one quick question to ask you.
Yes.
Okay. Are you then requesting a continuation? Because I have, we need something in the record-
Yes, it is a continuation.
You're requesting a continuation-
Yes.
Rather than a postponement? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Thank you, folks. All right. Now, we're going back in order.
Wait a couple minutes.
Yeah. All right, folks, if you can, please take it out in the lobby. We have other items that we'd like to get going with. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. We just found out about this now. Okay. Next item, or the first item is PB 1953 Snyder Minor Subdivision. Okay. If anybody's interested in this project, there's seats up in front. Please come up and sit in front. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jay Greenwell with Bill Brodsky, the applicant.
Could you explain your project, please?
Sure. Okay. I thought we were going right into the comments. This is a two-lot subdivision on Van Wort Place. The project has received preliminary approval from the planning board. It received variances from the zoning board of appeals and received the approval from the historic area and the ACOBOR. And we are here tonight for hopefully a final approval. We believe we've addressed most of the conditions. I see there's some other conditions from DEME, which we, we have no objection to with this new letter received from Bruce Peters this afternoon, or yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Going to the comments. Project view has no additional comments. Jane Slaven dated September 23rd. She has two comments.
No objection.
There's also a letter, which was not read in prior, which is September 12th, and she has three comments, two of which were carried over to the 24th letter.
No objection.
Okay. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, has 11 comments.
Initially, at the last meeting, there was a continuation because Mr. Peters had raised an issue that he felt needed to be addressed prior to final approval being granted, and that was the submission of test pits. That information was transmitted to him. And it was also because perhaps it was our fault, I'm not sure, but he did not ever get a copy of the drainage report addressing the installation of the chambers, which is the system that Mr. Brodsky wants to use. That information was given to him, and he issued this new letter that does not have that caveat that he is requiring because he's, he's got the information that he needs. And I believe we have a letter from Mazur Engineering, which is the town's drainage consultant, recommending acceptance subject to the conditions, which we have no objection to.
Okay. There's one thing, number four, which we addressed, brought up at the last meeting and bring it up now, and this is respect to the turnaround.
Mr. Machado has a memo in here as well. This was something that Mr. Brodsky was suggesting and was offering. If it's a problem, we're just going to remove it.
Okay, thank you.
This, just for the benefit of the public, this was a turnaround that was proposed for the, for the trucks to be turning around.
Okay. Mazur letter, September 23rd. They have nine original comments and then four additional. But the overall, the proposed stormwater management plans meet the intent of the regulation and therefore we recommend that Snyder Minor Subdivision Plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments. And I believe everything else has been read in. Okay, is there anything else, Cheryl? Okay. Mr. Mandel.
At the last meeting, we, I had asked for, that the landscape plans that were submitted to ACOBOR and approved as per PB Decision 8 be submitted. As of this date, I haven't seen them. And you said that they will be handed in at the last meeting. I don't have them.
Does the building department have them?
Well, we have the ACOBOR record.
No, that's all we have. I don't see the plans themselves.
Mr. Mandel, you have requested additional copies. We need to make sure that any work-
Yes, correct. Yes, that's what I had asked for because I wanted to see them because we do have the final say as to the, again, looking at, you know, the plans who originally show some, some landscaping, and he says this green giant apple vine is going to be used, but I don't see them on, unless they're on a, a site plan that I see that shows them along the, they show some on the north side, but there's nothing on, really on the west side. We had asked for those things as part of the, part of the proposal, so. And so the landscaping needed for both privacy and preventing headlights from shining into the Cunningham property in addition to the north side of the property. What I'd asked for, it said it would be given, hasn't been given, so.
Can I comment?
Sure.
What we were asked for, all right, just to, what I remember being asked for, was to go out and take pictures of the vegetated areas along the westerly, southwesterly, northwestly line so that the board can see exactly the vegetation. Because I was asked to plant some evergreens within the canopy of that vegetation, and I said it wouldn't survive. So, that's what I was asked, I was asked to provide the pictures, of which I did. I provided southwest, a west, a northwest, and a north shot of everything so everybody could see exactly what the vegetation was out there because that was what was in question last time we were here.
Correct, because I know, do we have that? They were all sent to us.
No.
I know initially Cheryl had sent, I believe, PB of two or three pictures, and then I had asked her for another view, which you did send, and that was to answer Mr. Dell's concerns about that, that, unless it was northeast corner. He sent pictures back on that. Yeah. Okay, fine.
That was what Mr. Dell asked. I specifically asked for the plans, as I usually do, want a landscape plan so we can give a final approval, that they don't trust ACOBOR, but this is our purview, and I'd like to see it. We're supposed to, the updated plans, last one we were at, you showed, you told us where the perk test locations were, but they weren't on the site plan, so.
They will be added onto the site plan. I only was supplied, I wasn't at the September 11th meeting, but I, I understand that's one of the conditions, and they were taken from what Fairway Testing has in their report, they were taken in the location of where the chambers are proposed to be.
Also, if you're going to amend the plans, in my opinion, just on the plan show at the two footprints, the current house, which you said was 1,800 square feet, and the proposal is for 2,150 square feet that they put in, in the envelope so that when they come back, it's, there's no problems with that. Now, DEME 4 regarding the turnaround on Van Wort Street, you said, "We haven't talked the highway, we're not going to do it yet." I'm looking at February 9th, a letter from the fire, Tapan Fire District that asks here, paragraph 2, it says, "The fire district requires access to the new rear property lot that includes a minimum of a 12-foot width drive using specifications for commercial parking and a proper turnaround for fire engines." I don't see anywhere where there's a turnaround for the fire engines on that, on that plan. And I can't go with, this is what the fire department wants and for safety. And that's February 9th, 1990. Nine, uh, 20, sorry, 2019.
I, I don't understand what that has to do with item 4 on DEME's memo.
I would say it doesn't. Because one's, one's down the road and the other, they're talking about the driveway.
Okay. This, it talks about a turnaround should be paid to town specifications. So, it's not DEME 4, but I'm talking about what the fire district wants, and they're asking for a proper turnaround.
To the rear dwelling.
The rear dwelling, correct.
Is that the entire driveway? And the turnaround and the back of the driveway would have to be fire department.
Well, there's no back out there. Because you come down that side driveway, you're going into the grass or whatever else. There's nothing-
So, are you suggesting that we should put a 60-foot diameter turnaround?
No. There's nowhere it can be backed out or backed into. I'm telling, this is what the fire department wants. For safety reasons, I usually concur with the fire department. That's only my opinion. It's up to the other people to what theirs is. Okay? That's all I have at this time, and I'll ask more depending on what the public has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Vaughn? Thank you, sir. Mr. Dell?
Yes.
It's on, like, uh-
No, it's on now. I went out to the site today, and part of what you said, Mr. Brodsky, was absolutely true. The southern end, the extreme southwest end does have a fence, and it has quite a bit of vegetation. But as Mr. Mandel very accurately said, one of the concerns is the headlights going into the property that starts somewhere near the northerly corner, northwestly corner, and then goes southward. In that area, the main vegetative cover that you're talking about looks to be like a cherry tree that actually fell down years ago. It's growing sideways with a diameter of about 15 inches, and then out of that are a number of sprouts that are six to eight inches in diameter. So, I hardly figure that qualifies as a vegetative cover to be avoided. That probably the applicant would want to consider removing or whatever else. And you could prune back some of the other areas. You could take an evergreen species, there are a number of them that would do that, such as Norway spruce. They could be planted in that area to at least get a start to let that applicant, I'm sorry, the property in that corner, to give them some sort of protection. I'm only talking about a distance of about 50 feet. So, at a distance, let's say from, as an example, like even 10 to 15 feet on center, you're only talking about five or 10 trees. One of the problems I do have with this subdivision, and there are several, is that we're arguing about being careful about not planting trees on the contiguous properties, but the lot from which this is being subdivided, there is an existing house, and around that is being put a nice berm and a continuous hedge of evergreens. What I usually felt we've tried to do here, if there was any onus of any discomfort or whatever upon the neighboring properties, it should primarily form to the fall to the property from which the part was actually originally subdivided. I also have other extreme problems with this in that I've expressed it before, that I feel that it is overdevelopment, and also too, particularly in the sensitive area that it's in that's subject to flooding, I don't feel that so far that it's a very good idea. I would also want to hear what the other members have to say and what the public has to say. But I think one thing that could certainly ameliorate the condition is to put some evergreens in the area I just described. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. McGory.
How do I, I wasn't here at the September 11th meeting, but I will say the concerns of my fellow board members are also concerns of mine if they feel, you know, that it's important to address. Another thing, I'd like to see what the public says about it because we're also up here to protect the public and see what, how it affects the neighbors and the neighborhood. That's all I can say right now.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to open it up to the public now. I want everybody to have a chance to speak. I'm going to limit you to three minutes. I don't know how many people are concerned about this, but, you know, everybody should be able to get out their opinion within three minutes. Okay? So, anybody wishing to speak on this project, please come forward and sign in and give us your name and address, please.
You don't have to sign, you just state name and address.
Cheryl, these are all from 125, 155.
I'm Carol Laval. I'm the president of the Tappan Town Historical Society, and I'm also in a butter, living on Main Street, 73 Main Street. And I am simply supporting the reservations, in fact, that have been articulated by the various board members, Mr. Dell, especially and Mr. Mandel. We're concerned about the turnaround. We're concerned about accessibility. We're also concerned about possible overdevelopment beyond the two-house subdivision that has been approved. And so we support your concerns and hope that these method, these questions can be answered and clarified to mutual satisfaction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this project? No? Can I have a motion to close public? Close public motion? Do you have a second? Okay, sorry.
Could I, I would like to ask, I would like to ask the applicant if you would be opposed to putting in ever-
Green plantings, as was suggested by myself and Mr. Mandel, or is that something you don't wish to consider?
I'll do it. I'll plant Norway spruce 15 feet on center or 68 footers.
Thank you, sir.
Could you just make-
Oh, just, just, I'm sorry. Just to quantify it, over that 50-foot length that you were asking about.
That is correct.
And I would, I would surmise that you're asking at the end of the, at the rear end of the driveway so it will block any future light.
It can be at the rear end of the driveway, but ideally, the closer you place it to that property line-
No, 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 I didn't mean that. I meant when you're coming up the driveway, the location is at that end where the light is shining-
That is correct.
But toward the woods.
Yes. On the east end.
On the west end.
West end, west.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask you to clarify it in the, if you're going to make a resolution to make it clear so that I know what to put on the map.
Well, it should come from the property line, the northwest property line, down.
Okay.
You're talking about the corner, the whole corner.
Okay. So, the northwest property, 50 feet down. And the reason being, I know as you go up the driveway, you're not going to have it, but when you come out and you back your car around, et cetera, you will probably have that problem.
Just, just so we're all on the same page.
I think we-
You go out there and you visit and everything.
It's what I've done.
The property line has the ditch, all right?
I understand.
So, we're not planting on the property line.
Keep it in front of the ditch.
No, no, no. To the left of the ditch, looking at the property line. So, it'll be about 10 or 15 feet off the northern section, just so we're all on the same page.
Okay. So, from the westerly boundary, it would be, the ditch itself runs essentially north-south on the westerly line.
No.
East-west on the northerly.
East-west on the northerly side.
Okay. Well, then there's another drainage ditch in the back as to what-
Yeah, but that's really not a drainage ditch. The, the major drainage ditch that, that takes in the water from Main Street runs east-west toward Van Wort, all right? It's a mess. And I've said every time I've been here that my goal is, my first intention is to take the trees out of there, a couple of dead, very large elms, all right? Open up the stream, I mean, open up the ditch so then the water will have free flow so Mr. Booth can then begin to alleviate the drain, the flooding in his backyard. And that was the whole idea of that whole-
I understand what you're saying, but there are, I was talking about the ditch that's along the westerly side that it runs approximately north-south.
The best I can offer for that ditch is to clean it up.
No, I'm not asking to do anything for it.
And put the, and put the trees-
But that's where we're talking about placing the trees, and you could place them on the property side of it rather than on the neighbor's side.
Yes.
Okay, that, that was the clarification-
There you go. I got it.
Is that John Booth you're talking about?
No.
Okay. Because it was a developer named John Booth who I've known for 40 something-
John's, I think, been gone for quite a while.
Yeah, I figured. I was going to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. I don't know if we voted on, okay. Up on your left hand, Mike. Go up to that corner.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I request that the applicant actually draw it on my copy since I don't know if I have any-
Yeah, we'll do that, probably.
Yes, please. I draw it on yours so you have it so we know. Yes, please.
Yeah, no problem.
You're going to start about 10 feet long?
Yeah.
Just label that 10 feet.
10 feet.
From there, yeah. And then label that length about 50 feet, plus or minus. So, that would be probably five at 15 feet or four, four to five, six to eight feet high. On, on center.
Mr. Brodsky, put the species down, too?
He did. Norway spruce. Six to eight foot high. Just put six to eight feet.
Yeah.
What's the distance off the west property line do you estimate?
15, 20 feet.
That far? That far off the west property line?
Yeah, because there's a house here, but the other one's way down here, so you go down there.
Yeah.
Five, five trees would be 60 feet long.
I planted about 100.
I know. I think we would stipulate five. Just, that rounds out to 60 feet.
All right, good. Thank you. All right. Jane?
Yep.
Jane?
If you want, I'll put that on the planning, I'll mention that.
All right. Let's go back, oh, we-
Mike made a motion to close the vote, George.
Right. And I think he-
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Public's closed. Any further discussion? I think we go to the final and just, just give him these, these conditions. Basically, he's picking up what you want with these extra trees, he's picking up what he wants with the extra trees, and the other things, he's just got to work out with the town, with that turnaround or whatever. Are you guys happy with it? Well, that's, that's your, you vote out wherever you want. Okay. Okay, can I have a motion? Will we make it as a condition? Okay. You've got to do lead agent there, that's it.
All right. I'll make motion for lead agent.
Final?
Oh, final, we don't do, okay.
We can go to the final, we can do it.
Mr. Vaughn's final with the, and the conditions are, number one, is the planting of the five, I believe, trees in that 50-foot corner of the northwest of the property.
Correct. Six to eight foot high, Norway spruce, 15 feet on the center, five to eight foot.
Okay.
Well, minimum of five. If he wants to throw another one, I won't complain. Off of good measure.
Okay. Jane Slaven, September 23rd letter, two items. Department of Environmental Management, September 24th letter, Bruce Peters, 11 items. Mazur, September 23rd letter, approving drainage. That's it. Do I have a second?
I made a motion, so I can't second.
I can't second. Mr. McGory, you want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. McGory, second it. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Do we have enough to get it through?
4-1.
Yeah. Three to two.
It said four, he said aye. He said aye. He said aye.
Oh, you said aye? Okay. Okay. 4-1. Very good, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it.
Okay, next item is St. Thomas Aquinas, PB 1954-54. Please sign in, state your name for the record.
Joe Donini, St. Thomas Aquinas College.
Ryan Nasher, from Atzal Nasher and Ziegler. We are the engineers and the surveyor for the project.
Okay. Want to explain your project?
Sure. It's a two-story dormitory off of King's Highway, that side of the campus. Yes, that's, that's really what it is, and we-
I could give you, I could give you some of the overview. This project went before the planning board in the past. We received the preliminary approval followed by the, the approval from the ZBA, which is on May 15, 2019. We received the approval from the ACOBOR, which is in June 6, 2019. We received some comment from- We received some comment from the, uh, town engineer, and one of the comment is to perform the test bit to show the proposed stormwater management practice works. We performed the test hall two weeks ago, and we prepared the certification report, uh, which was sent it to Bruce Peters last week. I spoke to Bruce via email, uh, yesterday, and he looked at it, and he was happy with the test bit because it works with the, uh, test result. Basically, we gotta show the bottom of the stormwater pond has to be below or equal to the groundwater elevation. We found to be, uh, one point three feet below, so it works. The certification was sent it to him, he was supposed to send a letter to the planning board, showing that he is happy with the test result, and it works. I have the email, if I want, if you want, I can report the email to you.
Let's, let's see, I, we might, we might all have it too, so.
Okay.
Uh, if there's anybody in the public that is interested in this project, please come up forward, you can hear better, and there's plenty of seats up in front. Okay, I'm gonna go to the consultant's reports. Project review, uh, uh, no additional comments. Jane Slaven, September twenty-third. Has three comments. The Department Environmental Management, Bruce Peters, has five. Let me see if it says anything about that. No. Okay. Um, hey, I don't read all the comments in, I know somebody may question it. They are put in the record, uh, I don't read them all, because like this had six comments, it's two pages, takes up a lot of time, but they are all put into the comment. If anybody's interested in the comments, they can go to the building department, then get copies of it, it's all public record. Booker Engineering has five comments, their, um, September twenty-fifth letter. The rec, the drainage review recommendation. The applicant has provided significant calculations to demonstrate that the proposed stormwater management system will mitigate potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage. We therefore recommend that the St. Thomas Aquinas Dormitory Site Plan be approved for drainage at this time. And I believe that is all. Anything else, Jim? Okay, thank you. Mr. Mandell?
Yeah. Uh, just a couple of things, comments, uh, I see that you've sat down with Bruce regarding the modifications improvement to the sewer pumping station over there. Has that been finalized, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Bruce is onboard with the planning, we have, in his comments, he notes that-
Right.
Says no significant occupancy, no CO issue.
Right. Okay.
The, it is finalized, the work is done.
Right. Okay, and a performance bond's gonna be issued on that. Okay, and I see from Booker that you, the spillway was added to the dry pond directing the water away from the building as requested. Uh, this last thing I have on this project is, uh, um, when you took, when you removed, you removed twenty-seven trees, you put fourteen in, and, uh, you say in your article that the groundwater levels, uh, according to your submission, are very high over there, and we know trees do suck up water, so in my opinion, I recommend that you add a few more trees out there. Deciduous type that are green all year round, that it would make for better appearance on the property, as well as, uh, you know, utilizing the water as a, as a, you know, way of keeping things green, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How many dorm units are there again?
Seventy.
How many, how many what? Thirty-six rooms.
Right.
Seventy-two. And there's no bearings to our-
I'm, I'm waiting for the new gym to come through.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Dell?
Yes, obviously, this is a classic campus situation, the main people affected by your development is essentially your community. There's one thing I am a little surprised about, is that a building of this scale, that you're literally proposing two to two-and-a-half inch caliper trees, which is less than we usually have for, uh, an individual house. Uh, three and a half to four minimum would certainly be more appropriate than what you're proposing. 'Cause a two-and-a-half inch crab apple, you're talking about basically a stick with some leaves on it. Okay? That could be increased. Now, the other thing that was mentioned very accurately by everybody, by Mr. Mandell in particular, was the water table. Well, there's an easy solution onto it. What you do is you build a mound, and you put the tree in that mounded area. Then it becomes an additional feature, then you don't have the roots going into the, uh, into the groundwater. So that would then give you a little bit more opportunity to try a number of trees. If you wanna go with crab apples, I think that's fine. But the scale of them, and the number of them, um, for a project of this size is, uh, far below what I've ever seen done, and I've been reviewing your plans for some time. So, uh, would you be opposed to increasing them to a minimum size of three and a half to four?
We don't have a problem with the caliber.
We have no problem with adopting this request.
Okay, can you also add, uh, of the crab apples? Add, you're not showing that many. You're showing eight. I think you could go with twelve, you could find places to put them. Okay?
I think that, that's what it would be, so you know, you can find a place for-
You find a place, you know where to put them, but it, obviously, it should be on the, uh, basically the northeasterly side of the property. But I think, you know, in a very, in a few years, you'll be able to come back, and everyone will say, what a lovely job you did, 'cause these crab apples are, are doing well, rather than coming back in a few years and saying, uh, what's happening? Okay?
Alright, excellent.
Thank you very much, other than that, it looks like a fine plan, and I wish you luck on it. But I wanna hear, obviously, what people in attendance have to say, and what my other board members have to say. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. McGory.
How you doing? Uh, this is my first time seeing the plans, I wasn't involved in the preliminary plans, but, uh, you know, just going by your campus, it looks good. You know, it's a good place over there, and I learn these guys up here love trees, so if you can, uh, do that with the tree thing, I'm on board with that. And I just, you know, better looks, better to the community, and, uh, that's what I care about, however it affects the community, so. That's it.
Absolutely, sure.
Keep up the good work, alright?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for the public, anybody that wishes to speak up on this comment, please step forward, state your name for the record.
I'll make a motion to oppose the public portion again.
I'll give a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? None. Okay, final conditions?
I'll make a motion for final conditions.
Okay, and the conditions are? Jane Slaven, September twenty-third, letter three. Bruce Peters, uh, September nineteenth, has five. Booker Engineering, September twenty-fifth, their drainage, they have five comments. And that is all, oh, and we're gonna put in that the applicant has agreed to increase the count of trees, and to also increase the size of trees to three-
To minimum size.
Minimum three and a half.
Minimum to three and a half caliber.
'Cause if you have, if you only get four and a half, I'm not gonna complain.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mandell, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is, where are we, oh, uh, okay, Alatus, PB nineteen dash fifty-five. Alatza, Alatza? Don't yell at me. Okay, anybody that wants the, is interested in this project, please, there's room up in front, come up, sit up in front. Does everybody sign in? I think, uh, the stenographer wants you to, you usually, they usually tell you the names, you put it in, or how do you wanna do it?
Jay Greenwell, Lanceavere.
George Alatis, builder.
Lordy Dominique, builder.
You're gonna have to spell that one.
See, I didn't do too bad with your name, I wasn't, I was a little bit, a little bit. Okay, please explain your project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is two pieces of property. Dominic's property is the one on the east side, uh, and what we're doing is, uh, putting the two together and creating, um, three conforming residential, single-family lots. The two lot, the existing house that's on the westerly property, right at the corner of Harding and Mercury, will be demolished, and, uh, there will be two new dwellings right at that location. And Dominic's, uh, house on the east end of the property would remain. And basically, they're, they're fully conforming, uh, with all the R-15 requirements. The property is, uh, twenty-seven thousand five hundred square feet, and plus twenty-three thousand five hundred sixty-eight square feet, for a total of fifty-one, one thirty-four, or one point one seven acres, and again, uh, three lots out of that, uh, one point, almost one point two acres. We provided a drainage report, showing that we're fully mitigating the, uh, new impervious area, of course, there's some comments, as there always are, and we have no objection to those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, project review has no additional comments.
So, you know, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make one quick clarification. Dominic does not actually own this, he's actually involved with George, he's a partner in putting together these three properties to build two houses. He's an applicant as well, he's not an owner of the existing-
We own that, we own that one. We own this one.
I just, I misspoke.
Okay. Uh, Jane Slaven, September twenty-third letter. Four comments. Department Environmental Management Engineering, Bruce Peters, has eight comments. Soil boring per test and determination of groundwater elevation shall be performed at the subsurface detention system locations. These tests shall be performed prior to this proposal receiving final approval, to ensure the adequacy of the proposed design. This information shall be added to the drainage calculation, the tests shall be performed in the spring when the groundwater table is typical at its highest. Okay, Booker Engineering, uh, through drainage review comments. Significant information has been provided to demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to, twice, respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Altis subdivision be approved for drainage, subject to the above comments, and which there are six. Rockland County Department of Planning, um, August nineteenth letter. They have six comments.
Jane, could you clarify number six? I'm not aware that they're gonna require a script for this, right, because it's a single-family construction, it's-
Right, if they know, if required.
Okay.
You missed that little iffy thing.
I did. It's important that if-
Yes. Rockland County Health, August thirtieth letter. They have three. Rockland County Highway, August twelfth letter. They have one, but, uh, they have no comments at this time. Rockland County Sewer, September third, has their usual two comments. We also have, uh, lead agency from Rockland County Health Department. Rockland County Highway, Rockland County Planning, allowing us to be lead agent. Show anything else? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mandell? Yes.
Okay, if I could just go back to Mr. Peters' DEME memo, item number two. And I've not seen him requiring per tests being done in the spring. That's a little onerous.
That's been kinda his normal comment, I think you have to work that out with him.
Okay.
Okay, um, it, you know, it'll be in the, you know, it will be in, as a condition, but the timing, I think, just work out with him.
Very good.
Okay. Mr. Mandell?
Okay, could you clarify, who owns the property?
DWL LLC is George and Donna.
Oh, okay.
They own the corner lot.
Okay.
Tomas and Anita Kowalski own the existing house that is to remain, I misspoke.
Oh, okay, it's just, got a little confused, that's okay. Now, on these, uh, looking at the plans here, uh, regarding lot number two, I don't see a driveway unless I'm missing it.
I think it's blending into the existing stone wall, which I understand, it's, it is a lighter line. You see the, um, the, should I approach there, point that out to you?
Yeah, if you could, I appreciate that.
Sheet two.
Sheet two? Oh, okay, alright.
We're taking the existing stone wall that's there, and we're relocating the stone-
Oh, alright, okay, alright. That makes sense now, okay, thank you. We haven't developed the landscape plan, correct, yet?
Yes, we, well, we'd have to, each of these lots are gonna have to go to the architectural review.
Right, but we should make sure when you do come back here, or whatever, that, that it comes along, the landscape plan, we get that time.
They're not gonna come back to us. We're granting subdivision, they, they go to ACABOR for the house, they don't come back to us. Alright?
I think that's why Jay brought up number two of Bruce Peters' memo. We read it, he's saying these tests shall be performed prior to the proposal receiving-
Final approval.
Which, he's saying we have to wait till spring to do the test bits, so we can't come back for final approval, which is why I was objecting to that comment.
Right, but, alright, so whether, comment, whether he leaves that comment in, or you work it out with him, and he lets you do it another time, it's still, we're, we're approving as a subdivision. They're not coming back in for the houses, they're gonna go-
We're gonna go to the architectural review board after the houses are, and, and at that time, we would provide the landscaping plan.
Whenever it is, spring, fall, or whatever, it doesn't come back to us.
This question came up on another one, that's a short, another problem, so that-
Well, I understand they have to satisfy that.
But I, I can't clarify that.
And they came back.
It's his comment.
Well, there's two, there's two separate issues. One is the timing on the perk tests, and the second is the provision of a landscaping plan for a subdivision, which is not normally required, because a landscaping plan is normally required for the architectural review board for the individual lots. In which case, you're correct, Mr. Bond, that it would go to subdivision approval, forget the timing on the perk test. It would go to subdivision approval, the map would be filed, the individual lots would then go to the architectural review board. In some cases, you've been requiring applicants to come back in front of you, because you've been granting subdivision of a, of a lot line change or something, saying that the other lot has to come back in front of you, because they're not showing a generic rating and drainage and utility plan, or addressing the drainage mitigation and the utility connection, and so on.
That's what we see here, it's not addressing, that's why we have those other people come back, because of those questions. But Bruce is number two, DEME's number two, prior to final approval, and that sits in there. I have another question, though, um. I'm looking at it right, on Director Slaven's comments, number four, dated, uh, September twenty-third. Number four says, uh, applicant must submit a full EAF per comment, number two, Rockland County Health Department, dated August thirtieth.
That was a mosquito, I thought.
No.
Type one action. The county health department-
No, it isn't here, number two.
Yeah.
The county health department.
But under what conditions is this a type one action?
And NYCRR 97.4, B tier nine.
Oh, that's possibly because it's a realty subdivision, that's why. Because it's, they, they went from five lots down to three as a realty subdivision. And because they're classifying as a, because they're classifying it as a realty subdivision, then we have to provide the long form EAF, which we'll have to do.
And you'll have to come back, first take a look at it and review it. Create a long form.
I didn't get the letter from Bruce. I have to get a ten years.
I mean, I have to ask you.
Right.
So, yeah, so the application is to be continued.
And just, I mean, we are, you know, just want to thank them.
We understand, and you gotta see where we are, too.
Yes, of course.
It's a good project, I have no objection to the projects, just that we follow the procedures that we have with him.
First, I'd like to thank the board for reviewing the application. Just to be, we're only creating one extra lot here, you know, even though it's a three-lot subdivision, we're just creating one additional home from what's there. So, they're requiring us to do that whole long form for one house? That's what seems a little bit odd.
It's not, it's not our requirement, it's not our requirement.
It's not our requirements, county.
And it's not even, it's not even a county requirement that we can override.
And I think you'll be able to talk to Mr. Peters with that and see if you can get number two off.
I will talk to Bruce and find out how hard and fast he is on that, I mean.
Even if he can modify it to some other verbiage, that, in effect, if everything was done, we could, in effect, give you a final. Because he's saying right out in front, prior to giving you a final.
I know.
And we have never overridden any of our, our consultants.
So, that means if you buy a property, you can't subdivide until the following year?
Excuse me?
Rarely, maybe.
We've over, we've overridden county, not, not the town consultants. I don't, I don't ever remember overriding town. Very rarely, yeah.
Very rarely.
But, but not at this point, we can't.
Okay. If anyone can contact, talk to help, see what's.
See what you can do with them, too.
I mean, the answers in the full EAF are gonna be no, 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 no. It's gonna be another, so it's, there's no point in contacting, it's just gonna be do it and, and submit it because the answers, there's, there's a de minimis environmental impact.
Right.
I'm gonna open us up to the public, anybody who in the public wishes to speak on this? Please step forward, excuse me?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, well, you can come up to the mic.
Come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and, and explain to you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Ready?
Okay, hi, my name's Julie Phelan, I'm at 11 Harding Street in Pearl River, so I directly face this lot where this new, these two new homes are going to be built. So, I wanted to ask a question, I mean, we looked at the plans, and they, they look nice.
You're gonna direct a question to him.
Oh, yeah. Do you know what style of homes are being built on these lots?
I, I don't know if you guys have to sign it, because they're gonna have to go to ACOB with the physical description of the home. At that point, you can be concerned, you know.
Okay.
You can voice your views.
And as a planning board, you can maybe answer this question, like, kind of, does this sort of set a precedent that this could happen repeatedly in our neighborhood where people are subdividing their property? And then, because we, we live in a nice little corner of Pearl River, I mean, we're a block from Pearl, from Chestnut Ridge, we're a block from Montvale. But it's nice and open, everybody's spread out, we're not right on top of each other, and I just get a little nervous of the idea of if one person subdivides, and the next thing you know, builders are coming in and buying all the homes that go up for sale, and then they're subdividing, and now we're smushing houses in there, and just want to, as a planning board, is that something I should be concerned about, or?
It depends on the size of the property.
Okay, so what's like the minimum?
The property has to meet certain requirements in order to be subdivided?
So, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
These all have to be legitimate lots.
Do you know what the minimum, like, property size is allowable in Pearl River?
R-15.
15,000.
Where you live is R-15.
Which means, I'm sorry.
It's a third of an acre.
A third of an acre, okay, which each of these lots will now be a third of an acre, correct? Okay.
They don't need any variances.
Right, okay, I wanted to verify, so, okay, thank you for answering the questions, appreciate it.
Yep. Yeah, please step up.
Hi, Jennifer Zorkin, 3 Harding Street, so I also face right into it. My biggest concern is the landscaping, which may or may not have to come back before you guys. But the way I see it, it could be up to 19 big trees coming down. It's gonna change the park-like view to new construction view. So, I do worry about that and want to see what goes into that.
They have to submit, apply to ACOB when they go for the homes.
Okay.
They'll submit a home as to what they want to do, and a complete landscaping plan. So, you'll be able to see exactly what they plan on doing at that time.
Okay. But there's no way for another house to go in that subdivision without taking down a large number of trees. So, regardless of how the house is structured, it will have to have a number, it's at least 14, if not 19, that would be coming down trees, so just, that's a lot. That's green to barren. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in the public? Motion closed?
Motion.
I'm gonna come back to you.
No, you don't have to close it, you can just close it.
No, okay. Okay. Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of the questions I was gonna ask have been asked. Your building envelope is approximately 3,500 square feet, and in theory, you could build a 7,000-square-foot house on it. We know that's not even what you're beginning to plan. How many square foot are the, is the houses that you're planning to put on there?
We will be staying in character of the neighborhood that's there, so roughly.
Well, just give me a general ballpark.
2,600 square foot colonials, 27 at the most.
All right, so, and it'll be two, two floors?
It'll be two floors, now, we could only build a maximum of 3,000 for R-15.
A little over 3,000.
And now, that includes the garage and covered porches.
Okay, there was a reason I was asking, and it has to do with the trees that the original owner of the property had kept alive, and that would be in the southerly line. If you were to go in a distance of 20 feet from that southerly line, most, almost all of those trees would be saved. And if you could say that none of those trees will be removed unless they are diseased or whatever, then I think that would go a long way in helping preserve the rural quality of this area, which is what makes these lots so desirable. You could dimension it off, Jay, I think you'll see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we were, we were anticipating saving those trees.
Right, well, then, we could say that to 20-foot, no trees, 20 feet from the southerly property line on both lots, no major trees will be removed, except for, you know, as needed, you know, so you're not afraid.
I mean, you know, we'd like to give the, the rear yard an adequate size. We, we are not opposed to saving as many trees on the property line as possible, perhaps, what do you think, 15 feet or so?
Certainly 15 feet, you're not gonna be disturbing anything.
Well, 15, you're running, you're cutting through a lot of the major ones. 20 feet, you could actually, you know, clear around them, whatever else, just leave those intact. And I think you'll see where they are in the corners of the lot and away from the lot line, that it shouldn't be any problem.
Yeah, we could probably do that.
Particularly when you have all that room in your envelope.
We, we will, when we come back, we'll show you something that we propose to save some.
All right, so if we put it in, let's say now, as a recommendation.
Very good.
Well, they're gonna ask for continuance tonight anyways, it's not something, it's something that they have time to study.
All right, I just want to give that concern because it's a valid point, this is a beautiful area, and I'm sure you want to keep it that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Board.
Yeah, well, we know you're coming back, so we'll, we'll look at the plans again, and with the, keeping the trees and all that. As you can see, it, your neighbors have concerns about that.
Yep.
You know, keep as many trees you can, so you don't disrupt the, the neighbors. Have you done any other development in town?
Yes, we've probably in the town of Pearl River, I'd say we've probably built about 30 new houses.
30 new houses?
Yep.
What, what style have they been in?
All colonials.
All colonials, some finetone.
A few, a few by levels, not too many. And probably in the town of Orange Town, we've probably done about 50 altogether.
And if the neighbors had any concerns, you could show them your work, show them what you've done in the past, and maybe help them out with the landscaping and.
Of course.
All right, thank you. See you when you come back.
Thank you.
Jay, are you asking?
We're doing the plans within the envelope, which is put the maximum square footage of the home that's proposed?
Well, the maximum square footage is gonna be the FAR, which is .2 times the lot area, which is.
Okay, would you, but just put it into the, into the envelope, we've asked other people to do that, too. So, we don't get a surprise.
I'm not sure I understand what your point is. What were you asking?
The maximum.
The FAR is 3,000 square feet.
Right, are you gonna be putting 3,000 square feet, or it's gonna be a smaller house than 3,000?
Well, we're not sure yet, that's, I'm, I'm not, I mean, the maximum permitted is, is the FAR, which is .2 times the lot area. For lot one, it's .2 times.
All right, that's the maximum, but I'd like to know the square footage of the house when you come back, that you're gonna propose to be put in there.
We don't know that yet, Mr. Board.
Well, you'll be coming back, you may know it by then.
No, we're not gonna know it by then, we're coming in for a subdivision, we're not gonna have the houses designed. The maximum permitted FAR is .2 times the lot area.
A 3,000-foot square house wouldn't fit that area.
That would be the maximum, that's correct, including the garage and covered porches and stuff.
You're saying he's talking with maximum 27?
Yeah. No, you're saying you say 3,000.
But, yeah, just to clarify, a typical two-car garage is about 400 to 420 square feet. So, the actual living space of the house will be in the 2,600-square-foot range.
Okay.
Now, if we had a porch.
That also counts.
That counts as well.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking for the house itself, that's what I'm asking for.
Well, we don't want to be misleading, because if you put a number down there, then it's on the filed set of plans. And then he's committing to something that he has no idea yet before he goes to the architectural review board.
I'm just hoping that the house will be in, it'll be similar to the homes in the area, not.
It will be.
Not to an extent that it doesn't fit.
And to answer, if I may, just the concern that one of the prior speakers addressed, just looking at the vicinity map, it doesn't look to me like there are other lots where this could be combined. These were very, too largely overs, I'm just trying to set her somewhat at ease, because it's not like this is going to be capable of being, happening in multiple areas in this neighborhood. I think it's a fairly stable neighborhood, and I don't see this happening without significant number of variances, which would be somewhat of an uphill battle.
No, it's, it's a great lot to go on, it's, it'd make the whole area, it would improve the whole area, I'm not against it.
So, at this point, we would like to ask for continuation, so we can address the full EAF and Mr. Peters' comments.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item. Orange Town Quick Stop has been postponed. Next item is West Lewis Avenue Minor Subdivision Plan, PV 19-57. Sign in and state your name and phone number, please. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Joseph Thompson, architect for the new owner of 39 West Lewis Avenue, here with us tonight, Daniel Stokes. We're here before the board to present a proposed subdivision to that lot, which would essentially divide an existing, almost double-sized lot on West Lewis Avenue into two parcels, and propose a new lot directly off of West Carroll Avenue. The, the existing lot, it's in an RG zone, which is a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot area. We are at 19,400 square feet approximately, so we're almost within 5% of that tolerance, so it's roughly a double-sized lot. Currently on West Carroll, when you, when you travel down that streetscape, this is almost, you know, empty void in that streetscape. It's non-contributing in the sense that it's a rear-entry driveway, and you're looking at the rear of the house and an existing garage that we propose, freestanding garage that we propose to take down as part of the project. Whereas, this plan, if it were to be approved, would provide a new home, a new facade on that streetscape, and I think a positive contributing element. What we would need as part of the, the approval process, if this were to proceed, are a couple zoning variances. We've worked with the PRC, we've met with them twice to try to reduce those variances required. We've reduced the size of the homes to be compliant with an FAR limitations. So, essentially, the variances that would be required are limited to rear yard variances, which we've reduced by actually cropping back some of the existing home and a small total lot area variance on the newly created lot. There are existing utilities that we plan to connect to, existing sewer on West Carroll for the new home. But water, we would need to create a utility easement out to, to West Lewis. We are proposing to add driveways, you know, the existing driveway that currently services the home on West Lewis would be abandoned and basically repurposed to service the home on West Carroll, and a new driveway to service a new garage addition that's proposed to the West Lewis residence. All existing trees are planned to be kept, there's some beautiful old growth trees that we're trying to preserve and maintain. Basically, we're lucky to have a wide-open backyard to be able to, you know, put a fairly substantially sized home that we think is in character with the remainder of the neighborhood, approximately a size of 2,600 square feet, and again, in compliance with FAR.
Okay, thank you. Let me read the comments. Excuse me, project review has no additional comments. Jane Slavin, September 23rd. She has four comments. Department Environmental Engineering Management, Bruce Peters. He has 11 comments. Rockland County Department of Planning. They have seven comments. Rockland County Health, September 19th. Has one comment. Rockland County Sewer, September 9th, two comments. And then we have a letter from New York State Department Environmental Conservation. By copy of this letter, we are advising the project sponsor of the above referenced resources, concerns of potential DEC permits. It is possible that the DEC permit requirements may change based upon additional information received or as the project modification occurs. And we have lead agent for Rockland County Highway, Orange Town ZDA, Rockland County Planning, Rockland County Health. Cheryl, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mandel?
Just a question on the proposed house. I'm looking at the narrative, and it said the proposed West Carroll Street, new custom house, 2,016 square feet. And you show on here 2,556 feet, does that include the, does that include the difference in the sizes?
Those two numbers are probably representative of the difference between livable square footage and the gross with the garage. So, the larger the two, I can tell you the 2,556 proposed is a gross, that would include the second story and the garage and the breezeway, all on the footprint.
Okay. Now, I'm looking at the plans, and I don't see a, a diagram showing the streetscape on either side where the driveways of the other houses are.
Actually, that is something we added, it's, it's at the very perimeter. I could actually demonstrate here. They said on West, West Carroll, the shaded areas are the curb cuts for the drive, one and two. And then on West Lewis, there's one, two, three, four, on the south side of the street, and then also adjacent to off on the north side, there are neighbors five here.
Oh, geez.
That is something that the PRC has requested of us, I know it's close to the edge of the sheet, so if we do need to rescale. I know it's close to the edge of the sheet, so if we do need to rescale to make that more visible, we.
Yeah, at least put the addresses.
We can add those.
Because your, your, your new driveway on West Lewis Avenue is going directly into the other driveways. So I was just, now that I see it, looking at it here and it seems okay on the West Carroll side, but. Yeah, it would have been nice with the addresses there. It's very hard to see. I usually don't look at the border like that.
We're happy to do that.
Okay. Now, the, the, the street drops dramatically going down towards Railroad Avenue. Is there a swift on this one or is there required on it, on subdivision or not?
I'm sorry.
Is the swift required on the subdivision here or not? Stormwater management plan?
No, I think it's below.
Okay. Required.
We're, we're below an acre. We, we will be commissioning an engineer to design a stormwater, a drainage system that would maintain water on-site and infiltration basins.
Yeah, this is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we fully intend to do that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so I'm looking at DEME's comment, number five. The plans shall show how the stormwater runoff from the new impervious areas will be handled because it does create a dramatic problem for the people on Railroad Avenue because it is a dramatic slope that goes down.
Our engineer is very confident that we can adequately and properly maintain that water on-site and infiltrate. We just did some test pits today that depicted good well-draining soils, so we have a good base to start with. I guess what we'd like to ask from the board is could we defer that until potentially after the zoning process to ensure that there's no, you know, issues at, at zoning board prior to investing in those engineering services and then obviously provide a, a full set of plans prior to any type of final approval.
Okay, and you're, you're looking for variances for, for zoning?
Rear, rear yards for both yacht lots and a, a minor lot area variance for lot, the newly created lot.
Mm-hmm.
Why do you, why do you need a rear yard variance?
The rear yards, if we look at the, the properties, we've tried to minimize these to the maximum extent possible to create a reasonable depth home on Lot One, which is, is currently only proposed at twenty-four feet in depth, which I, I would consider a reasonable depth home. Puts us within twenty feet of the rear lot line to comply with the front yard setback. The, the existing residence on the West Lewis facing lot, we've actually proposed to cut back a portion of an addition that was added to the house, restructure that to reduce the severity of the, the rear lot variance in conjunction with, you know, review at the, at the first PRC meeting, we've made that change. We can cut that addition back to the line of the existing kitchen that's in that addition, but to go any further would, you know, be pretty destructive to the home. So we're, we're trying to do everything we can to reduce those variances, but there's only so much depth to work with.
Reason for attaching the little breezeway area and just not having a freestanding compartment garage? Like, there's a lot of homes in that area that have that.
I think it's a nice feature. I wish my own home had it. You know, provides you covered access and we're within our FAR, so, you know, that, that doesn't create any variances. I guess we could reattribute that square footage back to the house.
The breezeway is a good selling point. People want to be able to walk from one place to the other.
And I think from the streetscape, it creates attractive geometry. We have the primary house and it steps down to transitional element and then back into a garage. I think we can create, you know, hopefully a very attractive facades on both, both streetscapes.
Yeah. That definitely makes sense. Nothing further until the comments by the other board members and here from the public, thank you.
Okay, I would like to form Mr. Bond to say, I have one more comment. Letter from Ralph, excuse me, Astoroni, September twenty-fifth. Dear Chair members, please be advised that our office performed a preliminary review and site inspection of the proposed subdivision of thirty-nine West Lewis Avenue on September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. The work involved a soil test hole and a percolation test. The purpose of the test was to determine if there was any impedants, impediments in either a drywall or a rain garden solution to the runoff from the proposed new home. We noted well-drained soil on both lots accordingly. We are confident within a reasonable degree of engineering, certainly with the below-grade infiltration devices can be designed to adequately accommodate stormwater for both properties in conformance with the current codes and regulations. Please call us if any other questions.
You want me to keep this, Cheryl?
I have additional copies. Cheryl, I have additional copies I can give you. Okay. We'll distribute it, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Bond.
And, and the reason for the lot variance? You have one's eighty-six forty-six and the other's ten-seven, seven, seven-five.
Correct, so.
Why, why don't you just make it ten?
A ten even.
The other one to the other lot.
So.
Is there a reason for that or?
Again, we were trying to balance those, those rear yard setbacks and, you know, use even whole increment numbers on the, on the lot depths, you know, one being at eighty-six square, eighty-six feet deep, one at sixty-nine. But the, the lot, rear yard setback on the original house would be nineteen point one. The rear yard setback proposed for the new home would be twenty feet. So if we were to balance out those lot areas, you know, getting the, the existing lot at exactly ten thousand and the new lot closer to ten thousand, we'd increase the severity of the rear yard setback. So our thinking was that the, the rear yard, balancing that rear yard was more important than the lot area, but we could easily make that change and shift it. You know, if we, if we wanted one to be an even ten thousand, it would just reduce the, the rear yard that we can provide on the existing home, let's say from nineteen to maybe seventeen and a half. We'd have to calculate it.
Okay, so that nineteen point one on the existing home, that goes to the current porch now?
It, it goes actually to a point where we're proposing to cut that addition back to.
Looking at this where?
So there's a, there's a demolition, site demolition plan in the package. It's sheet CX one oh one. That shows the current extents of that addition and you can see that it's cut back approximately nine feet, which would again, provide for a greater rear yard to reduce the severity of that variance.
And on the, the variance on the other lot is what, is?
So at a twenty-foot proposed setback, we'd need a five-foot variance. The, the minimum rear yard per RG zoning is twenty-five feet.
All right, so, oh, you're talking about your building, your building window is twenty-foot, right?
The proposed setback is, is twenty feet, just five feet shy of the, the standard twenty-five-foot setback.
And that's because of the garage?
That is because of the primary home. At, at a twenty-four-foot depth, which we thought was about as narrow as, you know, we could reasonably make a house and come up with a, a good floor plan and, and well-designed spaces on the interior.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The plans are a little unusual in the way that they're drawn in that it's hard to discern precisely where the break is between the two lots. And what I'm seeing here, though, over the seal of the architect, there's a line drawn through all of them. Is that his signature or is that his way, a way of showing that he didn't sign it?
That is my signature.
That's the way you do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because it looks, it looks almost like someone's trying to void it.
No, it's, it's intentional. It's to expedite signing, thousand sheets at a time when we need to.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
It's registered on file with the state, so.
No, I believe you. But sometimes we've had that happen. Only to find out, well, you know, we're just kind of handing this plan in. Okay. A lot of it seems to be thoughtful, but obviously the variances that are needed are created. Basically, it's just kind of a self-imposed hardship because you, you want to divide these particular pieces of property. And I could understand by looking at it, there isn't many other ways that you could do this to have a house that's, let's say, wider than ten feet, which is obviously not what you'd want. Looked like you were thoughtful on some of the other aspects, but again, this is one of the reasons when the lots start getting a little undersized and getting smaller that you might have some of these issues here. So the, could you go over once again, just very quickly, because usually it's on a chart, it's a little easier to read than this. The variances that you're requiring are for the rear yards and anything else?
Yes, sir. So the variances required, they're indicated with an asterisk. There's a small asterisk at the bottom of the bulk table and there's three total. So one being for proposed lot area for lot number one at eight thousand six hundred and forty-six square feet in lieu of ten thousand. The rear yard setback for lot one has an asterisk as it's proposed at twenty feet in lieu of the twenty-five standard setback.
Yes.
And then directly next to that in the right-hand column, proposed lot two rear yard setback, again, would require variance at nineteen point one feet as opposed to standard twenty-five.
Okay, so basically you're establishing slightly undersized lots and then because of that, you have a problem with the setback.
Correct. We're, we're trying to do the best we can to minimize these variances. Again, I met with the PRC twice and significantly reduced those from the, the first presentation, but we do require three variances as it's, as it's currently proposed.
All right. And we've been looking at plans, you know, obviously for quite a bit of time. So just as a, the comments I made, it's just, you look at the way the plan's easy to, it's a little more clear to get all that information across. Just a question of style, like you said, that you may want to look at that. Yeah, I'm kind of fence-sitting on this one. There's a lot of variances basically that you're asking for, particularly when you're asking for area. I want to hear what everyone else has to say, but it looks like you've done a very nice job with a difficult situation, but the difficult situation only aroused because you're trying to maximize whatever you can get out of the property, which I can understand. But also, too, you're part of the community.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Mr. McCord.
Thank you, Chairman. Who lives there now?
Bacon, currently bacon.
It's, it's bacon house? All right. I don't agree with forming an undersized lot. I mean, there's a reason why this town has the zoning code, you know, and in our town, the minimum lots are ten thousand square feet. Once we stop abiding by that, what good is zoning in my eyes? You know, and, and like you said before, you're kind of putting this burden on yourself by dividing it. And then you're seeking variances for the burden you put on yourself. So I don't agree with that. You know, it's, it's plain and simple. It's a nineteen thousand four twenty-one square foot lot. You can't divide that into two tenth thousand square feet lot. And that's what this town calls for. You know, it's not a, it's not an R fifteen. It's not a big lot.
It's RG.
It's RG. It's the minimum our town has. So I mean, all they're asking you to do is to have a minimum ten thousand square feet. So I don't agree with this change because I think I, I support strong zoning. And that, that's my comment, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody in the public, please come up. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Joe Gepner, fifty-seven West Carroll. Do you have, sir? Do you need to borrow my microphone, sir? Thank you. Yeah, my name's Joe Gepner, fifty-seven West Carroll Street. I live across the street from this lovely place. Okay, I've been there for, since the middle eighties and I've watched things diminish throughout forever. We used to have lovely evergreen trees right in front of me until the last people cut them down. We have a very small road. We could barely park too many cars. We keep from having arguments by staying distances away because you can't park across from each other. It's very tight. Any buses, UPS or anything can't even come down the road. Having an actual structure in front of my house and having the possibility of other people living right in front of my nose and arguing with them every day over you can't park here, you can't do this, we can't do this, we can't have that. The quality of life of having structures put up and things ripped down for how many months? All these things, before, all the houses were facing Lewis, so we didn't have that problem. Now we're going to have problems in the front and in our street with different people in small areas to put houses, which I think is ridiculous, the size of that house, even though he's thinking of us, he doesn't live where I live. And I'm watching structures left and right being put up for people who've been in the town for many years and support our town and have to withstand this. And that's why I'm glad you're there on the board to listen to us and to understand that we don't hate anybody. The house is fine. Fix it up. Do other things to the house. Keep it the way it is. You want to really have it beautified, put some nice evergreens up for me. Let me look at it like I'm in the country. Everybody's whacking everything down and squeezing everything in and changing the sizes and putting these monster places up and I don't know what's been happening around all different areas by us. It's like we're all changing. And for me, to have this quality of life diminished, we're having a structure and the sound and fighting over the street, and it is a tiny street if you ever went down it, I just don't agree with it. I think it's a wrong move. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
My name is Michael McHugh. I live at twenty-one West Lewis Avenue, two, two lots up from this house. I agree that this is clearly overdevelopment. The four lots to the east of this property all run from Lewis back to Carroll. And it's an optical illusion to think of if you eyeball this lot because the, the right-of-way that shows on my title survey, and I've been there since nineteen eighty-seven, shows that, that the lot is smaller than, than it can appear to the naked eye. So I agree with Mr. Gepner and, and others of my neighbors that this is clearly overdevelopment and urge you to reject the application.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak on this? Motion to close public?
Motion.
Mr. Mandel, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Bond, all favor? Aye. Opposed? Who you guys want to do it? It's undersized lot. Want to let them go to ZBA and let them worry on or, or what? What's the, all right, I guess I can't.
Well, there's, there's a, I think there's a, an assumption by the ZBA who let it go to them that we're fine with that. And I don't know if we're.
Well, we don't have to, we could make a notation and add our feelings to it. I mean.
West Carroll is a very narrow street. I think the house is too big for the street. We don't want to have the house on the street.
Can I, can we, can we open it back up so I can ask the applicant another question?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make motion open.
Well, we could ask him, we don't have to. We're not the public.
Why, I, I understand what you're doing. You're putting one house on Carroll and one on Lewis. Why did you chose not to put the other house facing Lewis?
We attempted a number of different configurations with the lot before we came up with this and this, this resulted in the least.
Because if you did that, you wouldn't, you probably wouldn't need, the only variance you'd need would be square footage.
No, no, we'd, we'd actually need side yards. We would need still lot area.
RG, RG has a ten, you would need a ten-foot side yard.
We could be.
You'd have to build a smaller house. I, I mean, I get that, but.
A, a house that would be out of character and detrimental to the neighborhood.
Again, you're the one who wants to build a house.
No, no, I understand. We, we have tried that layout. The result is undesirable. This, this is the most desirable result.
Undesirable for who?
Undesirable for the community, for the neighborhood. It's not something I would want if I lived on this block where, I do hear the neighbors concerned. They don't want this either, but I think this is actually, in comparison to splitting down the center, this would be a very positive development. It would provide a home front as opposed to a rear empty rear yard. They, I, I know there's concerns about the width of the street, but we are proposing to provide a garage so that the cars would be parked internally and on a driveway, not in the street. I know there's concerns about vegetation. We're not proposing to remove any of the existing old growth trees that are there now. We can't undo the sins of the past. We can propose a, you know, very nice landscaping plan moving forward. And I understand zoning exists for a reason and that laws exist for a reason and that they're there to protect the character of the community. In this case, I think this is a positive contribution to the streetscape. It's, again, if you travel down West Carroll, it's an empty lot that you view into the backyard and the rear of a residence.
But all the other homes are like, all the other homes along that way are the same. They, they all back up onto that.
And, and there's a number that are similar to this.
So is the next guy going to be doing the same thing you're doing down the road and, and we're going to have a whole, you know, five, whatever number of homes we're going to have, I didn't count them up on, on that street, you know? Which is, it is a narrow street to begin with, Carol.
You know, obviously you couldn't take a, a small lot, you know, most homes, most, most lots here appear to be close to that ten thousand square foot threshold. There are some are the larger lots. There are some that appear smaller. We haven't, we haven't taken an inventory of them all. But we're essentially within five percent under, roughly five percent under the twenty thousand square foot total, so it's not. under, roughly five percent under the twenty thousand square foot total, so it's not an egregious variance.
Well, it's still non-conforming.
It is non-conforming, correct. I agree with you.
Are there any neighbors that actually support this?
Well, certainly, I mean...
We haven't actually surveyed the neighborhood to vote for support, I don't believe, have you spoken to any neighbors?
Because it would look like the property right next door, McHugh's property, it looked like he could, just looking at the property, he could do the same thing down the road if he so inclined, if he left town and wanted to do the same thing, I mean.
Can we open up? I guess we may have to open up the meeting again, can we, sir? Motion to open public portion again?
Okay, yes ma'am. State your name and your address for record.
My name is Donna Gepner, I live at fifty-seven West Carroll Street. I have a double lot. I'm sorry. Donna Gepner. I have a double lot, I would never do this, and all my neighbors would freak out if I did it. When they found out I had a double lot, they said, oh, you would never do that, would you? This is, it's, it's just money-making, that's all it is, it's not about us. And when I thought he bought the house for himself, I was happy. Turns out I should have been not happy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Step up, state your name for the record, please.
Robert L. Capello, I live at nineteen West Lewis Avenue. I'm another one with one of the lots that actually goes from West Lewis back through West Carroll. And one of the reasons why we did move in here in two thousand and one was because of how it was actually designed. We thought it was pretty great not to have neighbors behind us, stuff like that. Adding another house down there is going to completely take the character out of our neighborhood. Another big thing, like everybody was saying with the street-wise, now as a former firefighter, I'm going to tell you right now, when people are parked on the street, you are not getting an engine up that street. I will guarantee that you cannot get an emergency vehicle through there when people are parked, guaranteed. Like you said before, we can't get a UPS truck down there, we can't get trucks down there, you know, they have to stop, you know, it's just, it's, I just perceive overcrowding, and it's just, once again, more overdevelopment. And like we said, if they don't, if they're not conforming, you know, how can you set it to let them have that variance, now you're setting precedence, and that's not good, especially with what's going on next door in another town. And that's pretty much my thoughts on that, is the emergency aspect especially. You know, and then forget it, in a snowstorm, we know we never have the, it's never cleared curb to curb, it just, they can't, and then it's even more narrow now, you know what I'm saying? So, and unfortunately in a snowstorm, if you have to get out before it's plowed, there's only one way to go, and that's down, because you can never get up because it's so steep, you know, the cars just can't make it up, you know, it just makes it more tight. So it's just more people in the neighborhood, and like they were saying with the parking and stuff, people still park on the street, you know what I mean? So that's just my concern, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just make a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Variances are sometimes understandable, if you have an R-15, you need a little bit. The problem that I'm having, continue to have, and is being reinforced by what's being said here tonight, is that this is actually asking to make a lot smaller than the smallest lot available that's allowed under the current code, and as such, I'm having even more reservations. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Sheridan, my address is forty-eight West Lewis Avenue, Pearl River, New York. I live directly across the street, kind of to the catty corner. I just wanted to express that putting in a twenty-six hundred square foot house on a very small lot would be counterproductive to the neighborhood. I dispute the fact that the other houses in the neighborhood would be pleased by that aesthetic. My house is eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet. When I purchased that house, I checked the two other houses directly next door to the house that you're looking to turn into a subdivision, and both of them were under a thousand square feet as well, so I don't know necessarily that it fits in with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who should speak on this? Can I have a motion to close public?
Motion.
Mr. Mandel, Mr. Bond, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none.
Our options are to disapprove it or to...
Attorney General?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Attorney counsel.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Will we take five-minute recess or ten-minute recess?
Can you make it six minutes?
Or seven. Oh, God, I don't know if I'm doing a good job or not. Nobody's been shooting at me ever now.
It's never going to be perfect.
No, I know.
There's no problem?
All right, we're back. Where'd everybody go? Okay, as you can tell by the discussion that's been going on, the board kind of has a little bit of a problem with it. Our attorney is going to read something for you, and this might lighten things up a little bit.
Yes, there is this section in town law, we have a town law, section two seven seven, which states that an applicant has an absolute right to make an application to the ZBA for an area variance. So the discussion was had with the board, you know, does it make sense to vote on this, deny it, accept it, and send it to ZBA? And I believe that the decision of the board, they can put on this, was not to vote on this, but to allow it to go to the ZBA. Now, this provision that I was quoting says that in reviewing such application, the zoning board of appeals shall request the planning board to provide a written recommendation concerning the proposed variance. So I think everyone's heard the comments of the board, and I think they've made their opinions relatively clear, but I think what's going to happen is the planning board is not going to vote on this, and the applicant can either drop it, not do anything with this, or make an application to the ZBA. When that happens, the ZBA will have to request something in writing from this board, and this board will provide its comments to the ZBA. So based upon the comments that you've heard, it may make sense to make some changes if you can, to make it accepted to this board.
Just, okay. My suggestion to you, or the board's, actually the board's suggestion is to you, is to ask for continuation, okay? At that point, I think if you go to the building department, I think you can make an application to go to the ZBA, and at that point, ask for your variances. I think the ZBA will probably get back to us asking our feeling on it, and we'll do something at that point, but I think that is the best direction for you to go at this time. Because I, I'm talking for myself, that I don't think that you would get approval from us tonight. I don't know about the rest of the board members.
Yeah.
But you can see from the general discussion that we do have issues with it, okay? So I think the best thing for you to do is ask for continuation. If you want to redesign, do whatever you want to do, go to ZBA.
Come back.
And see what happens with that, and then if you feel that you want, come back with whatever their recommendations are and proceed that way.
Just, one question just to our attorney. You said they have the right to go to the ZBA for an area variance. Okay, they're seeking other variances at the same time. Well, the side yards, side yards are not area, area is...
They're all area variance.
Side yard, it would be an area variance?
They're all technically area variance, it's under definition.
Okay, all right, okay, that's just my, just looking for clarification.
So you sort of area, so this is...
Okay, okay, all right.
That's our suggestion to you.
No, thank you, we appreciate the board's guidance, and we would like to request that continuation, and also add, our intent here is to try to create an improvement, not a detriment, so between now and the application to the zoning board, we'll also do some continued study of the neighborhood and inventory lot sizes and home size, and if this house is too big, we'll revisit that, you know, we want to do something that'll be a positive contribution, so we'll take a second look at this and maybe come back with some improvements, hopefully after we proceed the zoning board, but again, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, okay.
So for all the budding neighbors, when they do go to the variance, for the variance, you will be notified by the town, if you're a budding property owner.
Yeah. Excuse me? They told us the wrong place at the wrong time.
Yeah, well, that's because it got moved here because we had an earlier one that we thought was going to have a lot of people at, and that got pulled off, but hopefully the next one will be back at the old location, so.
We'll get actual letters and email.
If you're a budding, if you're a budding within, how many feet is it? Yeah, if you got one last time, you got one this time, for the ZBA, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, Western Iowa, enterprise site win consultation, PB nineteen dash fifty-eight.
I think I have that, yeah? He's not here. I found him out there.
Yes, sir, side in, and state your name for the record.
William D.
Okay. Want to explain your project, sir?
Unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask for a continuation because my engineer is not here. Don't ask me why, but I don't believe he knew that this was going to happen tonight. I didn't know this was happening tonight either until this morning, until there was a gentleman on my property, and he said that this was happening tonight.
That's I over there.
It was me, I was there. Okay, well, so until John is available, which obviously I guess is going to be next month.
You're going to ask for a continuation.
Ask for a continuation.
You sit for a consultation.
Yeah, I know, yeah, there's a couple of comments I can...
Okay, why don't we get the board's comments?
Sure, no problem.
And then this way, you can address whatever things that the board has to issue, and you can go ahead with it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mandel?
On your map, you show a proposed six-foot-high chain-link fence. It's not in the narrative, but you should give us at least how many feet this is going to be at start and its end. It would be on, I guess, the north side, okay? Number two...
Yes, it would be the north side, yeah.
In connection with the slab, which it's on the east side, the property slopes dramatically there, you want to put it on a slab, you have to have some sort of engineering thing to show whether it's going to be on a retaining wall or what the structure is that's going to be built on, otherwise it's going to wind up on the railroad tracks. And I think you're going to need from the comments, which if you read, I think it's a fully AF that's required on this one. Trying to find it. Is there? Yeah.
Well, if you come in for our full application...
Right.
...it will suddenly be required, so...
Yeah.
I didn't want them to be surprised, so go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. That's why he's in for a consultation, you don't want to be surprised. Right. That's in the comments, that last one is number nine from Buildings Department.
Sure, no problem.
On the AF.
I honestly can't figure out where he is, my office is in touch with his office this morning, and...
It's like this, you've got to put the tag like this.
I'll read the rest of the comments in too, so they're in the record?
No, you don't, that's a consultation.
We don't need to read the comments in for consultation, tonight, just let him come back, we'll discuss.
Okay, you have anything?
I don't have anything to say.
Mr. Bell?
Just a couple of quick questions, I know that lot land very well. Why do you need CO2?
Excuse me?
Why, what do you need, the carbon dioxide?
To make dry ice.
Oh, so you're making dry ice?
Yes.
Okay, now it makes a little more sense. So then actually it does well, you might even come in with a second, a second tank for something in future time?
No, no, this is a carbon, I believe it's a six-thousand-pound carbon dioxide holding tank, and it's connected to a pelletizer that makes dry ice.
Okay, so how many deliveries do you think you probably get in one?
Deliveries of?
CO, liquid CO2. Just approximately, just one...
I would guess at peak, maybe one.
All right.
Super peak would be two.
Are you making this for yourself or for sale?
For myself.
Okay, and may I ask what you're using?
For his, dry ice blasting.
Okay, now it's clear, thank you. But obviously the other concerns about that, if there was a place where you could put a tag, and if it ruptured, it wouldn't cause a problem, this is probably that location. However, you know, you may have to give some details on the retaining wall, you might want to make a larger walk-around area, slightly larger than you dimensioned it, so if someone needs to walk around it, they'll be able to do it without falling off the edge. Okay? That's just a standard thing that's working on it. And other than that, you know, I understand what you're doing, I wouldn't have any issues with it, but, okay, thank you.
No problem, thank you for any more trouble.
No, no comments at this time, it's just a small, minimal addition.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, did you guys read my comments?
I'm sorry, maybe I missed them.
It seems the previous owner had developed the site without final planning or ownership, so that's a concern. So while the app, the request for this tank is minimal, there's a lot of site issues that need to be addressed.
Let me read your comments into the record then.
Jane Slaven, September twenty-third, do you have a copy of these comments?
I have it right in front of me, I just got it out front, yeah.
Okay, she has a total of nine comments. Okay, I'm not going to reuse one, but they're going to be put into the record.
They're going to be ones you're going to have to address.
You're going to have to address all of them. The Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, he has eight comments.
Hey, I'm sorry I don't have those. I have seven from Jane, and that's it.
There's nine here.
You have it there? Okay. Let me try this again. Well, I see, all right, go ahead. All right. Seven to three, right? Okay.
Okay, so you're going to ask for a continuation?
Yeah.
Okay. And then just work it out with the Cheryl, and once you get all your things together...
Yeah, definitely, and I also need to obviously find out on Jane's comments, yeah.
Well, you have the comments that Slaven and Bruce Peters have, so you can go probably see if you can resolve a lot of those before you come back.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay. Next one is thirty, Rockland Park Avenue, site plan, PB nineteen fifty-nine. Okay, sir, state your name for the record.
Donald Brennan, attorney for the applicant.
Fu Jun Chang, I'm an architect.
I'm a Christian lady, in the office.
I'm a Christian athlete, in the office.
Thank you. Mr. Brenner, what is the project, please?
Well, there's an interesting project, it's been here for a while. What happened here, they had an accidental spill about a year ago, certain parts of the waste product discharged into the Sparko Creek, they came under violation, they were told to clean it up, they've engineered a situation where it will be collected properly and housed. So primarily, we've gone through all the boards, we've gotten all the approvals, we are here for final approval right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll read in the consultant's reports. Project review has no additional comments. Office of Buildings, Zoning and Planning, Jane Slaven, September 23rd letter. The applicant is reminded that no work can begin, no permit will be issued, all the comments are met from various agencies, all approvals are obtained, and the final site plan is stamped by the chief clerk and the board. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, dated September 23rd, has seven comments. Okay. I have a memo, memo, a memo, dated August 15th, from Commissioner DEM. Let me read it. Commissioner Riley, review of the aforementioned plan reveals deficiency in the proposed plumbing drilling due to the current stamping location of the SIU permit number 2019-034. Currently, the sampling that takes place is performed inside the existing building in the soybean soaking room. This location does not account for additional drainage from the waste container, see drawing P 002. Additionally, the manhole that is located in the northeast side of the building receives flow from Rockland Park Plaza and flows north to the rails or trails and then to the plant. This manhole does not represent an adequate sampling location for the industrial pretreatment permit. I suggest that an alternative sampling location be created to combine the flow from both the processing and the spill pad drains. I also would like to see that the flow meter is installed, if feasible, so that the actual flow is accounted for rather than relying on the system being prorated water bills. I have marked up these concerns on the submitted drawings and request that the drawings be modified to meet SIU permit requirements.
The engineer has looked over that, the engineer is designing a system which will conform, we will work it out with Mr. Peters. The only question I have, which I will work out with Mr. Peters, is about a flow device. I know, I don't know of any flow device that really works, but we will work it out with him.
Thank you. Okay, Rockland County Planning, September 18th. They have six comments. Okay, and, Rockland County Health, September 19th. There are no, Rockland County Department of Health approvals needed for this application. Okay, Mr. Mandel?
There ain't one here, please. There's nothing at this time.
Okay, I'll go back to... Mr. Bond?
I don't have any.
Thank you. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When last this was brought in, it was not a good situation, you had excess fluids being dumped into a regular dumpster, it was leaking out of the side. What I saw there was very nice, very professional, obviously, it's made for what this is, for food waste, and that's good. Couple of questions. First of all, on the inside of the building, you're having all these floor drains for this, does this just go right into the sewer, or do you have some sort of sediment traps in there? What's happening?
As far as I know, this is an old building, as far as I know, this has been operation for many years, the entire...
But not in dysfunction?
Well, you've been there for several years right now. How many years you've been at this site? How many years have you been at this site? Yeah, where you are. Where you are right now, how many years have you been there? When did you move into the building? When did you move into the building?
When did you move into the building?
When?
Yeah.
When?
It was 2001.
Oh, so...
It's almost 19 years.
They've been over 19 years.
And you've been doing the same type of operation all that time?
We don't have a problem. I'm sorry, I have a hearing aid, that's why.
I understand, I just wanted to know if you're doing the same type of activities, you're doing the same thing?
Yeah, sure, we cut up with this.
Okay. Now, the other comment is, I think around this area, are you going to have any covering on it, or is it going to be open?
No, this building is going to be fully enclosed.
This whole area will be enclosed?
Where the, where the, where the unit that's collecting the waste is going to be in a building that's fully enclosed.
Okay, and it will have, I assume, access doors to it, et cetera?
That's correct, doors open up and they'll be able to take the waste away.
Okay, so then, when this happens, I assume there'll be some sort of de facto moat system inside there, so that if anything spills, it won't run out?
It is sloped to a drain which goes into the sanitary system, and that's, that's the design, it is, there will be a drain in the building, it'll be drain in the building, and it will be sloped.
All right, but what, do you know what size pipe it's going into? Because if it's going into a four-inch pipe, I don't think it's going to be too good. If you're talking about 12-inch pipe, then it's probably going to be effective.
Well, we've got to get permission from the Sewer Department.
I understand that, but I just want to know what you're proposing, because they're concerned about what happened when it gets there, mine concern, our concern here, is what happens before it gets there.
Well, I don't wish to challenge you on it, but the Sewer Department usually has the say what they're going to let go in and what they're not going to let go.
I know what they're going to let go, but I'm making sure that in case there was a problem with...
He's trying to find out what's the diameter of the pipe that you're making the connection. Where's the outside design? Do you have the outside design? It's a four-inch connection.
Four-inch?
Yes.
That's existing, or that's what you're proposing?
That's what they're proposing.
All right, I would suggest you double that, that would be my suggestion.
Well...
Because four-inch is not going to take too much...
No, I don't, I don't agree with you, I'm sorry, Mr. Dell, I don't agree with you. Four-inch, four-inch pipe takes a big, big flow.
Yeah, but not when it's like Jell-O, which is some of those...
This is not, this is, if there's a spill, this is not something that's going to happen all the time, and if anything, it's just going to be an overflow, which should have never happened, they've been there for 21 years, and they had one overflow.
I understand, if you're putting in a pipe, it's not much of a difference between to put in, let's say, an eight-inch pipe as opposed to a four.
Well, you got...
You're not talking about, it's just an extra way of protecting it.
No, there is a discharge pipe that comes up and picks up the sanitary waste, and I think that's four-inch, so you can't take an eight-inch and put it into a four-inch, because then you're going to have a clog in front.
Okay, I didn't know, because that's small, and then maybe the whole system is undersized, and that's something the Sewer Department will have to...
That's correct.
Okay, well, as long as it's some way or other so that you can't have this overflowing...
That's correct.
And obviously, the rain won't be coming in, and you're going to have some sort of berm or something in there, we're going to have to put in a foundation for this building.
It will, it's going to be in an enclosed pad, and it's in the closed, if you looked at the drawing, it's an enclosed pad which is going to be drained to this pipe.
No, I understand it's an enclosed pad, but what, what's the height of the side, the sidewalls?
How high is the building?
Twelve feet minimum.
How much?
Twelve feet.
No, the height of the side, oh, so the building itself, it's going to start from there and go up 12 feet?
That's correct.
Well, obviously, I don't think that's going to overflow. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCory? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to the public, anybody from the public wish to make comment on it? Do you have a motion to oppose public? Mr. Bond, second, and Mr. Mandel, all favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Go ahead with the final with the conditions. Because basically, the only, well, concerns we have is... Is DEM, and they have to, they have to go through him. What do you want to do? I've got a feeling that, personally, I don't see why we can't get them finally, the conditions. Okay, so I have a motion?
Motion for final condition?
Mr. Mandel, motion for final condition. Conditions are, Jane Slaven, September 23rd letter, one item. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, September 23rd letter, seven items. Letter from Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, from Michael Weber, to Iman Riley, about the SIU permit. Rockland County Planning has six. Rockland County Health has none. Cheryl, anything else? Okay, have a second? Mr. Bond, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Congratulations, sir.
I'll speak to you later on. I'll speak to you tomorrow.
Okay, next is 125 East Central Avenue, Site Plan PB 19-60. Mr. Brown, do you sign in?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Explain your project, please.
Okay, this is the old Zitzmark Building, it was bought by my client who's an accountant, he's been in the building, I think, over two years, he has a storage space downstairs where he wants to use for office purposes for additional accountants, primarily, that's exactly what he's doing, we had to go back to the board because it's a commercial development. The problem there, which the board asked for, was to show where a handicap parking space was going to be, we now show that on the drawing, we also show that there's adequate parking for everything, but we're taking a request not to build all these spaces because we don't need them. So the only thing we're really going to do is mark out the handicap space.
The old Zitzmark, excuse me.
So the storage in the basement, and wanting new offices for some of the basements, the seller's storage part is not counted in?
Right.
So that was the old ski rental?
Right.
Old church.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, it's, your client did a beautiful job.
Yes, yes.
A nice addition to the town.
We, we would like to have the whole work's final tonight if we can get it, because there's really nothing to do.
Okay, let's see what the board says, let me read the comments. Jane Slaven, September 23rd. Okay, just one, just one comment. Department of Environmental Engineering, this department has no objection to the request for land banking for parking. Bureau of Fire Prevention has three. Provided egress plan for basement, provide reflective fan ceiling, plan showing fire alarm devices, and what will the use be? That was from...
Michael Betman.
Michael Betman, Bureau of Fire Prevention. Rockland County Department of Planning has six comments. Rockland County Health has one. Rockland County Highway has two. Rockland County Sewer has two. We have lead agency, Rockland County Department of Planning, Orange Town, ZBA, and Rockland County Health Department. Anything else, Cheryl? Okay, Mr. Mandel?
Just on the plan page, on plan page three, I know that they don't want to land bank spots 1, 2, 3, 4, whatever, but half of it shaded as if it was, I think it's cleaned up, because I'm reading it wrong.
I'm going to work with you because the architect went to Florida. And I'm not bringing him back. Okay.
The spots 1, 2, 3, 4?
They, they, nothing, really what he did, the area in white is already pay, it's already a parking lot.
Yeah, I know the spot.
So the shaded area was to be developed to show that it can be done, and those are the areas that we want to land banks.
Yeah, I know that, currently, it's spots 1, 2, 3, or 4 are there, they're perfect spots.
Drawing three shows them having to be moved in order to accommodate?
The number, right.
The number of spots required, that's why it's partially patched, because they would have to move them back.
Okay, oh, okay, now I follow, okay, all right, so they had to move them back, then...
They had to move about 10 feet, and they were accommodating the area required to get the land bank spots.
The parking you're going to have is the parking that's there now?
That's correct, except we are going to mark the handicap, that was a specific requirement.
I just wanted a clarification.
And by the way, I do, I do, I made an error here, this architect is still around, it was somebody else that went to Florida. You know who I was.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you. Mr. Dell?
Yes, I have no comments.
Mr. McCory? Are you all right? He's got to put at least one tree in somewhere.
He was gunning up for the first item.
They'd be expecting that.
I know.
Keep them guessing.
Anything, Mr. McCory?
No, just, it's, it's a great building, they did a lot of good stuff to it, and it actually seemed like keeping the neighbors' necks, we started improving their lives.
Definitely, done a fantastic job.
Just with the basic, I know from firefighter point of view, is there, can you get in from the ground floor in the parking lot, or you got to go? So there's, I don't know that part, so there's egress out of there, so there's no problem with...
That's correct. It's level, yeah.
All right, that's all for you. It's a good film.
Okay, thank you. You want to give them final? If we do, we got to declare the lead agent. Okay. I'm sorry. You're doing good, okay. I'm going to open up to the public, anybody have any comments on it? Well, there's a gentleman back there, he's got to give him a chance to say no.
I already know he's got nothing to say.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm going to close the public portion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, public's closed.
I'm going to go for lead agency.
Mr. Bond?
Second.
And Mr. Mandel, all in favor? Aye.
I'm going to go for a negative. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to go for a final with conditions.
With conditions. Okay, Jane Slaven, September 23rd, has one. Bruce Peters, Department of Environmental Management, September 23rd, has one. Town, Orange Town Bureau of Fire Prevention, have three. Rockland County Department of Planning has six. Rockland County Health has one. Rockland County Highway has two. Rockland County Sewer has two. Any second?
Second.
Mr. Mandel, all favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Congratulations, Mr. Brenner.
Well, two out of three is not too bad.
Boy, oh, boy. That's the first time we ever did one right, right through. Okay, do we have any other business?
I want that section of the law.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments on...
No, I'll make a motion in a minute. Second.
All favor? Aye. Opposed? None.
I'm for it.
Okay, one, one... Okay, one, one, one not here. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All favor? Aye. Good night, everyone.